Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, April 24th, 2017. I welcome all of you here this evening. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Lowell Nelson, Emmanuel Lutheran Church, 104 Galvin Road, North.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, thank you for tonight's meeting. Let it be a blessing to all the members of this community, this beautiful town known as Bellevue. We give thanks for our elected leaders. We give thanks for those who have been employed by the city. We give thanks for the public represented here. Let all discussions be in a spirit of unity for the common good. In our Lord's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Nelson. Item number two, roll call, please.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon? Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item 3, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes, and advisory committee reports.
Subitem A is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve the agenda. Second.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Subitem B is the approval of the consent agenda. The items included in the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or a citizen so requests, in which event that item will be removed from the consent status and placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Subitem 1 is the approval of the minutes of the April 10, 2017, meeting of the city council. Item 2, approval of claims. And item 3, acknowledge the nomination for appointment of Deborah Addy to the Library Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term until June 2021. Madam Mayor, our council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Modri?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I move to remove the approval of the claims from the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Cook?
I don't think we need a second or a motion.
Mr. Buckley?
There's no need to vote, motion and vote to remove something from the consent agenda. Once it's asked to be removed by council member, it's removed.
So item number 4 has been removed. Are there others? Mr. Burns, did you have a motion?
I'm just gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. I was just gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda. So we're just approving it without the approval of claims on it?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, then I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended, or no?
With removal of 4.
Okay.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 4?
Item 4 is the approval of claims.
Mr. Preister?
Motion to approve the claims.
Second?
Second, my Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, we went through the approval of paying internet services for Councilman Preister, which we approved, and so I go along with that this time. In his case, he had not had internet service and was getting it for the purpose of being able to fulfill his city council obligations. This claims, we have Councilman Shannon asking for reimbursement for internet service as I know he has previously had internet service, and I think this is a way of using public office to pay for his internet, and I don't think that's right.
Are there any other discussion, questions? Mr. Hanson?
I guess, thinking about that, Jim, I guess the problem would be is if you have it for one based on something and not have it for another one when they're using their expenses, I don't know that would be the right thing either, even though it might be two different reasons.
Mr. Modri?
Yeah, I guess I understand that, but I'm kinda looking at it on a case-by-case basis and, you know, the justification for reimbursement in both cases.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make a comment. I mean, I'm gonna, we voted on this at our last meeting, it was a split vote, it was approved, and I'm just gonna repeat my concern. I did the math, and we are basically paid a little bit over $200 per week to serve on this council. And I think that, I know people that are on school boards and NRD boards and many, many different boards throughout our community, and the pay, the fee, whatever you wanna say, is zero. It's just the volunteer, the community aspect of it, we are paid, I think it came out to $211.50 a week of what we get. And I think that is more than appropriate to cover the expenses that we meet while sitting on this council. We could argue about, I'm on my phone all the time talking to people. I'm not asking for reimbursement. I print, I print stuff all the time. I'm not asking for reimbursement. It'd be one thing if we were sitting on a board or a council that there was no pay and something was truly, truly needed. And I just think it's wrong. I'm not gonna fight it, it's been approved, I'll accept it, but now what we're gonna do is we're gonna set a precedent that people are gonna say, "Buy me a printer, buy me a cellphone, hook up internet, clean my suit." And I just think that's the wrong road to go down. There's no parameters, we have not put any boundaries on this, on where it can go and how far it can go, and I just think it's inappropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
Just a further comment, and again, I voted last time against this, and it was a split vote, as Paul said. However, still my point is, is that it did pass, and to do it for one and not do it for another is not necessarily the right thing to do.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the discussion. I think when it comes to how much we are reimbursed, it sets a tone of how much we're valued. And if we don't value ourselves, if we don't value the contribution we make, if we don't value the fact that our employees get the tools that they need to do their job, and I sit here and I see one, two, at least two that I can see, computers that the city has provided for the council members, and I don't hear too much objection, that's a tool to do the job. I simply think we should have the same tools staff and everybody else does. And these electronic gadgets are here, and we're using them more and more, despite the fact that I would rather not even have one. But we need them, it's the way we operate. Almost everything comes in on email. Without the internet, you're almost lost to do this job. To demean that and to say we shouldn't even have it, or take it out of our expense account, I don't see as what we should be doing. But I respect the right to challenge it and to raise questions, I just see it differently. And it is an essential tool for doing this job. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions, discussion? Mr. Modri?
Yeah, it just does not sit right with me to have the public reimburse someone for internet who has internet for all kinds of other uses and has had it. I would like to move that, or remove the item for the reimbursement of internet, or patch Shannon for $95.46 from the claims.
Well, we have a motion and we have a second. We have a discussion?
You don't have a second.
We don't have a second.
We have a motion and a second on approval of the claims. We have a motion to remove Mr. Shannon's reimbursement, which has not been seconded.
So, Mr. Modri, that's your motion?
Yes.
I need a second. Motion fails. I call the vote on the original, to approve the claims for internet service. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 5, special presentation, none. Item 6, liquor license.
Subitem A is manager application of Megan E. Kelly for Class D liquor licenses held by the Quick Shop #675 at 502 West Mission Avenue and #688 at 602 Galvin Road and #689 at 4151 Harrison Street.
Is there anyone here to represent the Quick Shop? Welcome. Are you Megan? Come on forward, please. Please come forward. Do you have a few words to say?
No.
And you are Megan E. Kelly? Thank you. I'll go ahead and open a public hearing now. Anyone want to speak for or against? Please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the manager application of Megan E. Kelly for the Class D liquor licenses held at Quick Shop #675 at 502 West Mission Avenue, #688 at 602 Galvin Road, and #689 at 4151 Harrison Street.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Hanson. Could you please sign in so we have, for the record, that, Megan? Yes. Right there's a clipboard. Yep, thank you. So we have a motion, a second, any discussion or questions? Mr. Modri?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting for religious and personal reasons.
Please vote.
Four yes votes, one abstention?
Thank you. Item number 7, ordinance for adoption, third reading.
Item A, ordinance #3873, a request to amend Section 7-5, City of Bellevue subdivision regulations regarding minimum design standards for sidewalks. Mr. Shuchuk, did the amendment come to the council members?
Yes, it was in the packet.
Okay. This is an item continued from the last meeting, and as Mr. Shuchuk indicates, an amendment was prepared.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance #3873.
I'll second.
Second, my Mr. Thomas Burns. Discussion, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, we had a concern last week about wording of it, and just, I wanna make the comment that this is only for new subdivisions that are platted, so when this ordinance would go into effect, it would go from that day forward. If you currently live in a neighborhood in the city of Bellevue, if you redo your sidewalk or put in a sidewalk, you match the sidewalks in your neighborhood that would've been platted maybe many years ago. Is that correct?
That is correct. And also, I've seen a number of people talk about a city requirement that when you sell your house, you have to put in a sidewalk. That is not correct. There's no provision for that. I wanna clear that up.
And also, if, let's say unfortunately, maybe a house is knocked down in Bellevue for some reason, or there's an empty lot, but it's an existing neighborhood that, obviously the majority of the homes were built, there's an empty lot or two, someone buys them, they're gonna match the sidewalks currently in that neighborhood, which would be by the old regulations when that neighborhood was platted.
Yes.
So, and we've had a lot of issues and concerns about this, so this is from this day forward. I know, what is it, 15 days for an ordinance to go into effect?
It's May 9th, as the ordinance states.
So any new neighborhoods that are platted, they would have to follow these guidelines.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Modri?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, what's the side yard setback requirement? I know it can vary, but general.
On a corner lot?
On a corner, yes.
It varies from, generally it's either 15 or 20 in most of your subdivisions.
Yeah. You know, 15-foot would put that sidewalk about three and a half feet away from the house.
No, no. The 15 feet is to the property line, or the 20 feet is to the property line.
Oh, to the property line.
Then, under this regulation, you would have green space, then sidewalk, then more green space than the curb.
Yeah, about a foot buffer before the property line starts. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote. Oh, Mr. Preister?
Did we need to do the amendment? It's in there, we don't need to do it separately?
That's correct, it's already in the packet, as is, and the city attorney was given direction to amend it at the last meeting.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Then I'll vote?
Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 8, ordinance for public hearing, second reading.
Item A is ordinance #3877, rezoning lots 1 through 75 and outlots A through F. Belalago from AG to RG 50, the applicant is Boyer Young Development. General location is 45th Street and Cape Heart Road. Along with that, you have item, subitem 1, approving the preliminary plat for lots 1 through 75 and outlots A through F, Belalago.
I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Boyer Young Development. With me tonight from Boyer Young Development is Dave Boatman. Also with me tonight is Jeff Kaposas of ENA Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is a 38, 30-acre tract of land that's located at 45th and Cape Heart. It has an 11-and-a-half-acre pond or lake on it as well. We're seeking a preliminary plat approval of 75 lots and six outlots, one of which is the 11-and-a-half-acre lake. Of course, the property's currently undeveloped, and it is consistent with the comprehensive development plan, which designates this property as medium-density residential housing. I am happy to announce here tonight that we actually have the property to the west immediately of about 20 acres under contract, and then also, as of tonight, we have the remainder of the lake, which is an additional six acres under contract as well. So there won't be additional home sites on the other part of the lake, but the lake itself will be owned by one owner, and I know that was a question that the planning commission had, as far as, you know, what do you do when you have a lake that's split between owners? I was proposing some kind of reciprocal access that would provide for the use and access to the lake, you know, and of course, the shoreline around the lake at this point in time, now we will own the entire lake. We are going to grant the owner, Mary Moore, access to the lake for the purposes of fishing and accessing the lake from the shore. So I do have some exhibits that would show you, we haven't really laid out the additional 20 acres to the west, but it does provide through Lawnwood Drive access to 48th Street. So. So this will be developed through the use of an SID. The concept that Boyer Young is proposing is to, it's a Villa Ranch-type concept. The houses will be between 1,500 and 1,900 square feet, between two and five bedrooms. They'll have two-car garages. The idea is to have an association that will maintain the lawn, snow removal, et cetera, so people will pay association dues, and then, of course, everything will be maintained uniformly. The average price of the homes are $300,000. They'll range between $275,000 and $350,000 in value. I do have some, we were gonna have a little slideshow, but I guess your projector's not working, so I've got some additional exhibits that show sort of the Villa concept. So if you just thumb through this, this shows the front elevation of a couple of different types of concepts. There's also proposed a community raised garden that you'll see in there, and then also, there's some common areas as well. And of course, all of these various Villas will have access to the lake for fishing and recreation. So with that, this comes to you with favorable recommendations from the department as well as from the commission, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this proposed development.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I see the easements. I think there's maybe three of them. And the one map I'm looking at here, about one of the easements, it looks like, is there gonna be a sandy beach where the public can go onto it?
Not the public. I believe this is for the housing development only. Is that?
There will be no beach.
There will be no beach, no. And this really, this is an amenity for the development itself. And it's a relatively small lake, it's, you know, 16 acres, 17 acres in size, so it's not a big lake, and there won't be any motorized craft on here of any kind.
So the easement's purpose is for?
The easement's purpose is to allow the various unit, Villa owners, to use the shoreline, of course. I mean, for safety reasons, obviously you'd want someone to be able to utilize the shore if they needed to, for one, but also, they can walk around the lake certainly and enjoy the lake. So that's the purpose really, is to provide pedestrian access. People could obviously fish from the shore, that kind of thing, but the idea is not to allow the public generally to access this lake.
But, yeah, for me to come across town, it's just basically for the residents.
It's for the residents, correct? And you'll notice, I mean, this is the preliminary plat. The final plat will just consist of, I believe, 30 lots on the north side, and then when access is able to be gained from the south side, then those lots will open up. Now, now that we've got access through that Lawnwood Lane to 48th Street, that might open up the ability to have more than the 30 lots, maybe potentially to the total of 48 lots that I think are contemplated on the north side of the pond.
Sure.
Otherwise, there, if you look, there's, I think, I believe it's 45th Street that would actually connect to Cape Heart for the second access point that will also be, will also serve the development.
Who maintains the lake?
That will be the association.
When that neighborhood is annexed by the city, who then maintains the lake?
The association. It's not gonna be publicly owned. The lake is privately owned.
So it will be an association for eternity?
Yes, and the association will own the lake as well. And that's why it's an outlaw, it's Outlot B. That Outlot B will be conveyed to the association when it's formed.
I just don't want a situation, well, my concern was, you know, if, when it gets annexed, then it's on the city, and we find that out, some people will put up with nuisances and issues and problems when they're said, but once they get annexed, then they wanna come to us and say, "Fix this and that." So, but what you're telling me is that this lake will always be under the control and the maintenance required will be under the control of some type of a homeowners' association.
That's correct. The subdivision agreement that will come before the council with the final plat, I mean, the only way that that could ever be owned by the SID, for example, is if it was somehow designated a park, which would be dedicated to the public, and then the SID would, of course, own it and maintain it. In this particular case, you won't find any of that language in any subdivision agreement. In fact, it'll be the opposite, which you'll have in the subdivision agreement's language, that the association shall be created and formed for the purposes of maintaining the lake.
Okay. Is there any other areas, like, you'll see at an entrance where they'll put a grand entrance to them? Is there any, sometimes they'll put in the roadway a divider where they'll be planting trees and putting rocks, or is any of that gonna be in there? And if so, would that also be under this homeowners' association to maintain for eternity?
All those would be private improvements and amenities that would be maintained by the association. The only thing that would be maintained by the SID that would eventually be annexed would be the streets, sewers, utilities, those things that are typically public improvements.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jovan? See none? See no other questions for you at this time?
Right. So this comes back to council win for the vote.
Right. The next meeting with the third will be Monday, May 8th.
May 8th, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? This is open for public hearing at this point. Anyone wishing to speak? See none? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Again, this is, the third and final reading will be on Monday, May 8th. Item 9, ordinance for an induction, first reading.
Item A is ordinance #3878, vacating a portion of 51st Street abutting Lot 102 Cedar Grove and Outlot A, Cedar Grove, a portion of 53rd Street abutting Lot 133, Cedar Grove, part of Lot 121, Cedar Grove, and of Lot 120, Cedar Grove, and a portion of Birchwood Drive abutting the south line of lots 102 through 109, Cedar Grove, and the north line of lots 91, 110, 119, 120, and 133, Cedar Grove. All located in the, in part of the south half of the southeast quarter of Section 7, Township 13 North Range, 13 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska. The applicant has requested that the statutory rule requiring three readings on different days be suspended, that the public hearing be held this evening, and the vote taken after the public hearing is held at this meeting.
We need to have a motion first. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion that we suspend the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days, and that we conduct a public hearing at this meeting and then take a vote tonight.
Second?
Second, my Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri?
I understand the reason we're requesting to waive the three readings is that we're up against a deadline to approve.
Mr. Shuchuk?
Yes. The final plat of the Cedar Grove replat 1 was approved by the council on February 13th. They have 90 days to file that plat with the Register of Deeds, which is coming up early May. If this is delayed beyond tonight, the ordinance, if it passes, would not be finalized and take effect until too late for them to file the final plat within the time zone. There were, during this whole process, they applied, there was some confusion as to far as whether the county had to approve the vacation, or the city had to approve it, or could approve it. So there was some delay in that processing internally between the city and the county. That's why it didn't come to you sooner.
Yeah, I guess, you know, it's just concerning to me that we're put in a box like this at these times to have to approve, waiving the three readings in this case, so I hope in the future, there's better foresight and planning and stuff to make sure these things happen as they should.
And you have seen these before with the approved, the approved final plat that you saw in February?
Yes, I know. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Now for public hearing on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I think I can provide you some comfort, Mr. Modri, because I guess there's really a question as to whether these roadways are not already vacated. I think this is sort of an abundance and caution type thing, because under state law, there's really three methods for vacating public streets. One is by subdivision, which we did. The other is by petition, which we didn't do. The other is if the city initiated the vacation itself. You know, I guess the question I would have is whether this is actually necessary or not. I'm good with it, because all it does is confirm that those streets are vacated as part of the replat that you approved, which is Cedar Grove replat 1. So hopefully that provides you some comfort in the fact that there's these three readings that are waived. But typically, you know, this is, I have to be honest, this is one of the first times I've actually seen where you'd come back and vacate right away that's been vacated as part of a replat right away, because you've approved it as a council. So I appreciate you all approving the waiver of the three readings, but I don't, I think it's sort of no harm, no foul here on this one. it's sort of no harm, no foul here on this one. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jovan? No. See none? We're just at public hearing at this point, Mr. Modri. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Please do so at this time. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We have the motion in the, no, now we need a motion. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance thirty-eight seventy-eight.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any more further discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinance.
Subitem one is a public hearing on the event license application of the Nebraska Running Company to use Hayworth Park and Keystone Trail on August twelfth, two thousand seventeen from six AM to twelve PM for a half marathon, ten K, five K, and kids run.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Joe Ramos. I'm here on behalf of Nebraska Running Company. It was a company started by my wife and I. We are lifelong runners, and we wanted to bring an event to Bellevue and the Sarpy community. Reason why we wanted to start this type of event and company is because we find ourselves going out of town and out of state a lot to do what we love, and that's to take our family, our four kids, to do anything from five Ks, ten Ks, to half marathons. We travel to Kansas City probably at least once a month because they have a lot of great events out there. So we figured that, you know, there, there are a few events out here in the area that people can capitalize on, but there's really nothing that provides, that I have found, the same type of event and, you know, just a really great opportunity for people to get involved in the community running and even businesses for event sponsorship. So our plan is to have our inaugural race on August twelfth, utilizing the Hayworth Park as the beginning and the expo for our race. And then our race would continue along the Keystone Trail for, you know, a distance of roughly six and a half miles and then turn around, come back. So we would only be using the area from about six to noon, and then everything would be cleaned up after then. Our plan right now is to cap the amount of runners at five hundred. That way, we're just not overbooked if, if this event really takes off. Additionally, we're going to be opening up to a lot of other members in the community that have small businesses to utilize this event as sponsorship opportunity. In addition to this venture, I'm also a insurance agent involved with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, and I've already have a good handful of fellow chamber members that are interested in sponsoring such an event. So essentially, that's our plan. Does anybody have any questions about what we're doing, what our goal is?
I have one question. I assume you've visited with NRD on the levy? Will the, the run will be on the levy, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I have, and I spoke with the gentleman a few days ago, and he has cleared the date, and he said pretty much anything except for a flood won't stop us. So, and if it was a flood, I figure we'll just turn into a swim.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
The Nebraska Running Company. How do you, how do you advertise where people can sign up? And are you a profit or nonprofit?
It's going to be a little bit of both. We're going to be a for-profit company, but our model right now is going to donate somewhere in between roughly thirty percent to local charities. I'm a retired veteran out of Offutt Air Force Base, so actually disabled veteran. So a lot of my focus is on veteran charities and disabled veteran charities and families as well. So we're going to be having a good portion of our proceeds that come in donated to such charities. Additionally, through our registration website, there will be areas where upon checkout, applicants or not applicants, but participants can donate additional funds to our charities. And what we're doing is essentially, we're planning on having anywhere between eight to ten events throughout the local area every year is what our, you know, future goal is. Going to start out small, just going to see it as build it up. But we want to have each different event have a different charity that's associated with it. You know, my wife is very, you know, particular for, for cancer and for, you know, homeless children. Like I said, my focus is veterans. So we want to kind of divide it up amongst charities that benefit those type of people in need. Additionally, I think your other question was how to register. What we are in the process of doing right now is building our website. So once our website is up and operational, it should be this week, we're partnering with a third party running an event website that actually will link to ours, so anybody who wants to run can register through that website, essentially.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, we're going to do a lot of advertising through local businesses as well.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing the event to this area and to making it available. I think running is a good family event. It's useful for life, and it's very good for your health. I would offer a suggestion. If you want to run locally, this coming Sunday, we're going to have Earth Day at the Lead Center, and in conjunction with that, we'll be a run. And that run would be a very good opportunity for you to advertise your run to a lot of runners who are already from the area.
That's actually a very good idea. I was unaware that there was one coming up. I am actually going to be, oh. I'll come grab that real quick.
There are the details.
Thank you. But anyway, my chamber power partner group and myself, we are sponsoring the Open Door Mission Run that's coming up, and then I'll also be sponsoring the chamber with the Runway Run. So I'm going to definitely utilize those opportunities to advertise our event. But I do appreciate this information for sure. My family and I love running. My daughter and I just did a ten K in Kansas City last weekend, so it's only a nine-year-old I know can do six miles.
Great.
Good for her.
Yeah.
And I also salute the fact that you're looking out for veterans and that you're using the funds for charities and doing that locally, too. So thank you very much for all of the things you're doing.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions from the council? See none? Did you sign in, Mr. Ramos?
Oh, no, ma'am. I didn't.
I hadn't signed in. In the meantime, I'm open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I don't see anyone coming forward, so I'll close the public hearing. Motion from the council? Mr. Modri.
Yes, Mayor. I move that we, where are we here? That we approve the event license application for the Nebraska Running Company to use Hayworth Park and the Keystone Trail on August twelfth from six AM to twelve PM for a half marathon, ten K, five K, and kids run.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council.
Ten B, public hearing on other matters.
Item ten B is a public hearing on the event license application of Victory Riding Academy to use Hayworth Park September twenty-three, set up on September twenty-two and rain date of September twenty-four, from ten AM to two PM for Operation Free Ride Rodeo.
Is there anyone here to represent Victory Riding Academy? See none? But I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? See none? Close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the event license application of Victory Riding Academy to use Hayworth Park September twenty-third, set up on September twenty-second and rain date of September twenty-fourth from ten AM to two PM for Operation Free Ride Rodeo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Any questions? Discussions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number eleven, resolutions.
Eleven A is resolution number two zero one seven dash zero six, amending the master fee schedule under fire and rescue squad fees with the proposed rescue fees. This was previously on the, excuse me, March twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, and April ten, two thousand seventeen agendas.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Preister.
Mayor, I will make a motion to approve, and I just lost it, so I'm...
Eleven A.
To approve eleven A, a resolution amending the master fee schedule under fire and rescue squad billing.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Burns. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Buckley.
I just asked Mr. Preister in his motion to identify the resolution by number, if you have it there.
Ah, I just got it. I believe it's twenty seventeen dash eighty-six?
Zero six.
Zero six.
Are there any questions? Mr. Modri.
Yes. Chief, could you come up? Thank you. Under our current billing, how much write-off do we have? It's around forty-five percent or so that we have to...
Roughly that. Dee Gray is here, I believe, so she can answer that probably. She works with it every day, so.
Okay. Is that about right?
Yes, that is, that's, that's our average, yes.
Okay. So in raising the fees, are write-offs going to go up as well then? A greater percentage?
No, sir. They won't. The fees in Bellevue have not been addressed or touched for over ten years.
Right.
We are the lowest in the state right now.
I'm okay with that.
And, well, the problem comes when the insurance companies create their fee schedules of what they're going to pay us when we have a contract or non-contracted with them. So we maintain a low level for the entire county, the state, the region, and the nation. The whole idea is for us to stay current and in line with those areas I just identified. But because we have a contract with Medicare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Medicaid, we are locked into their individual fee schedules that they already have established, so we're not going to get any more money from them.
Right.
The write-off will remain the same.
Well, theoretically, I understand what the question, that theoretically, the write-off does increase in a percentage...
Yes.
For the, for the entities that we do have a contract. So if you're charging a thousand dollars more, but you've already got an agreement that you're going to charge two hundred dollars, then, then that portion of it would actually be a higher write-off. However, you're going to get more money, and you're going to get some adjustments from different carriers of insurance based off of what the local jurisdiction and communities around them are charging. So in essence, you shouldn't get any more or less of a write-off after they've adjusted their rates to meet what the usual customary fee is.
I think one of the, the higher contracts we have is with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Their fee schedule is significantly higher.
Than Medicare and Medicaid.
And two of their fees are higher than what we even charge, which means they reimburse, they allow what their fee schedule is, and by not raising our rates, we will lose money from Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
But if we raise them well above what they, they allow, what they pay, we won't...
No, they pay based on what their fee schedule, what their fee schedule is established.
Right. So help me understand then, for, for example, BLS emergency?
Yes.
Blue Cross Blue Shield right now allows, allows five fifty-six eighty?
Yes. Yes, and, and we only charge four seventy-five.
Right.
So we're only getting four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Right.
Whereas they will pay...
If we go up to five or six fifty, which you're asking...
Yes.
We'll, we'll only get to five fifty-six eighty, correct?
Correct.
So we gain...
I'd like to add something, though. By not raising it to the average, then essence, we artificially keep it low so that they never will raise it. By us keeping in line with the average cost of what everybody else is charging...
Yeah.
That's how those insurance rates are set, and so we're artificially keeping it low.
Yeah. ALS one emergency, Blue Cross Blue Shield is six hundred and sixty-eight dollars, correct?
Correct.
And we're currently doing six thirty-five, so we're a little below that one as well. Yeah. You know, I have another concern, I guess, for, for those people who don't have insurance, but who are, who are good stewards and pay off or want to pay off and that stuff, making the burden too great for them. So, I don't know.
The only thing I would say is the people that, that aren't able to pay probably aren't, are going to continue to not be able to pay.
Yes, yes.
But I think that has to be addressed in, in a, in a policy that we're not, that isn't part of this, and that is, is how, how you enforce your billing, which is a completely separate issue, and that's not what we're after today.
Yeah. I'm not a big fan of comparability in, in most anything because it drives things up.
Certainly, this is just our recommendation.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? See none? Mr. Modri, did you have a couple more?
Well, I'd like to make an amendment. I would like to amend the fee schedule, so BLS emergency is at five hundred and eighty-five dollars. That's about five percent above the current Blue Cross Blue Shield. ALS one emergency is seven hundred dollars, again, five hundred, five percent above Blue Cross Blue Shield, and then retained ALS two emergency at nine hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know if everybody understood that here.
We have an amendment?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Preister.
I appreciate the effort to look out for some people, but I think in this case, it's better to be consistent throughout the, the area and to have that consistency for not only Bellevue, but the other communities, the insurance companies. I, I think it's just smoother, cleaner, easier, and I would prefer to see it as it's been presented to us, personal opinion. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? See none? Please vote. On the amendment.
The vote is three to two. Motion fails.
Thank you. So we're back to the original motion. Is there any other questions before we move on? We'll vote, vote on the original. Please vote.
Vote is four to one.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business.
Item twelve A is approval and authorization of the mayor to sign the notice of exercise of purchase option for Fire Station Number Four in the amount of one dollar from the Eastern Sarpy Rural Fire District.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve authorizing the mayor to sign the notice of exercise of purchase option for Fire Station Number Four in the amount of one dollar from Eastern Sarpy Rural Fire District.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Questions or discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve B.
Twelve B is approval of the renewal of lease with the United States Postal Service for the two zero four West Mission Avenue Suite Number One location through December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of lease with the United States Postal Service for the two oh four West Mission Avenue Suite One location through December thirty-first, seven, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve C.
Item twelve C is approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation agreement between Bellevue, La Vista, Papillion, Douglas County, and Sarpy County for the Sarpy Douglas Law Enforcement Academy.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperation agreement between Bellevue, La Vista, Papillion, Douglas County, and Sarpy County for the Sarpy County Douglas, Sarpy Douglas... cooperation agreement between Bellevue, La Vista, Papillion, Douglas County, and Sarpy County for the Sarpy County Douglas, Sarpy Douglas Law Enforcement Academy.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I looked at this. I had a conversation with Chief Albert this afternoon, and I, I, I think this is truly a good direction to head. It's a, it's a, an agreement, an inter-local agreement for five years. The cities we have include everybody in Sarpy County. With La Vista and Gretna receiving their services through Sarpy County and Douglas County. And I think this is the right thing to do. I, I think it'll help with our recruitment of officers to come down here and to work when they can go to an academy and go home that night to see their family, eat dinner with their family. I think it's huge. I truly hope that this works out, and I, I'd like to see it, you know, maybe at the end of this contract, uh, to be expanded and maybe offer this a class not only to other departments, but maybe even to civilians that have an interest in law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Albert, wanna say thank you for all your hard work, um, putting this together. You have a few words you'd like to say?
All right, thank you. Um, I probably, uh, first and foremost, I wanna thank, uh, um, our neighboring chiefs, um, and the sheriffs. This is truly, um, something you get accomplished when you have great relationships with people. Um, this is a big endeavor, um, and it took a lot of work behind the scenes to get it to this point, and, um, for that, we're very grateful. Um, this would be a very good thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
I would just say, this is one of the things in our strategic plan, that we're going to become more efficient to take law enforcement from the metro area, which is the greatest number of law enforcement personnel in the state, I believe, and to send them halfway across the state, or a big part of it, and to stay in hotels, and then do the training, and then at the end of that, come back, when they're all from this area, or many. It just makes sense to be more efficient, to do what we say we're going to do in our strategic plan, and this is another example of where we say we're gonna become more efficient and where we're actually doing it. So I just make note to the public, we're being more financially responsible and efficient in our full city operation, so I too cha- thank the chief and all the other chiefs.
See no further discussion or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve D.
Item twelve D is approval of the Kawasaki User Relations Loan Agreement with Kawasaki Motors Corporation and Dillon Motorsports for the use of a, of loaner utility vehicles for the police and fire departments.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. I'll make a motion we approve the Kawasaki User Relations Loan Agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve E.
Twelve E is approval of a temporary occupancy permit between the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway Company and the City of Bellevue to access a parcel of land to be used for erosion repair on the abutment berms of a bridge.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the temporary occupancy permit between BN SF Railroad Company and the City of Bellevue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve F.
Twelve F is the approval of the low bid and authorization for the mayor to sign the contract with TAB Construction in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, forty-nine cents for American Heroes Park Phase Five.
I'll make a.
Mr. Preister. Oh, Mr. Burns?
No. I'll make a motion that we approve the low bid and authorization for the mayor to sign the contract with TAB Construction in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents for the American Heroes Park Phase Five.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Yes, I, I, this is not a budgeted item, but, uh, there are a number of CIP projects that will not be done this year and will move, so that makes room for this. That's, is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I think there's over three million, uh, in CIP projects that are.
Yeah, yeah, somewhere in that area.
So this, so we have plenty of room for this.
Yeah, we have the money to do it.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. And Mr. Roberts, we also talked, these projects, uh, what Mr. Modri's talking about, he is correct. Some of these projects are just being pushed back and would not be done this year.
That's correct. They're not eliminated. They're just, because of timing, will not make this fiscal year.
And, so I, you know, I don't know if people know what projects they are. They're just gonna be pushed back hopefully and, and, and still be done. Most of it is on Thirty-Sixth Street, but also part of it is on Twenty-Fifth Street. So they're not leaving the books. It's just being pushed back, and we won't get them done this, uh, budget year anyway.
Right, those projects are still ongoing.
Thank you.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Construction and construction season and what happens with doing that is a moving target, and so we have a CIP, we have things in place, we have a plan, but when that plan doesn't come to fruition because sometimes of other bodies like the federal government, then we're in no position to move something ahead like the Thirty-Sixth Street redevelopment because it's not ready. So that's why we have a CIP, and we have a second and a third and a fourth and up to six years of projects. And this project has been one that we've been working on for at least six years. So it's just a change of priority to make something happen in existing budgets. And as Mr. Cook says, it's reprioritizing, I think, and those other projects will be put in, uh, subsequent budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
One more comment, I'm sorry. Jeff, we're paying fifty percent of this, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, this is a matching grant with the PAPUMS, or NRD.
So, and that's, you know, you look at the number, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, a big number, but the city is paying half, and NRD the other half.
That's correct.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G.
Item twelve G is a request for permission to purchase five trucks for the purchase, for the Parks Department using the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract and Equipment Technology LLC pricing not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars, eighty-four cents.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the request for the permission to purchase five trucks for the Parks Department using the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract and Equipment Technology LLC ETI not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Preister.
I'll just mention again, this is part of our strategic plan. One of the items in the strategic plan is that we update vehicles when they reach a certain mileage or a certain condition. Uh, some of the vehicles we're replacing are twenty years old, and those vehicles are, uh, in some cases, as time has changed, they're not appropriate for the duty and the responsibility that we need to get done in certain jobs. So we're only replacing five of, I believe, eight or so vehicles that are, have already reached this limit. And we're using pricing that gets us, uh, although there may be some aspects of these vehicles that we may think we could get cheaper, because it's in a certain pricing structure, I think these are the best prices we can get at, for the most appropriate vehicles. Thank you.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, and, and the, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-four, eighty-four, includes the vehicles plus then some additional that we didn't have separate quotes for in our, our packet. Is that right? Or, uh, the two boss plows and a flatbed and a dump box.
That, yeah, that's included in the three hundred and twenty thousand.
Right. I think all we, we.
Accessories.
All we saw in our packet was the two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three, three eighty-seven for the vehicles themselves.
Hello, I'm, uh, Brian Madison, one three eight zero six, Clearwater Drive. I'm the new park superintendent for the city. Mr. Modri, uh, you're correct on the assumption that the total was, uh, three hundred and, I'm sorry.
Twenty.
Get it out here. Three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, the memorandum that I, that I had sent forward, that's in the, in the packet, that says from myself, actually has the boss plow, the flatbed, uh, the boss, the two boss piles, flatbed and dump box to the left of that. Um, on that memorandum looks like this, and I can provide you.
I don't know if I got, was that in the packet?
I can provide this to you, and I can send.
Yes. Yeah, I don't think that was in the packet. So we can't order these vehicles with a, with a flatbed instead of the regular box? We have to pay separate for a flatbed?
No, no, sir. That's in the total amount, the three hundred and.
Ri- right.
Yeah.
But I know the, the vehicle itself, you know, the F three fifty or five fifty, whatever it is in the particular case, it will come with a regular.
Yes, sir.
Bed, right? And then we're paying ex, we're paying separate for the, for a flatbed and?
Todd's our fleet maintenance guy, so.
Yeah.
Subject matter expert on that.
These vehicles are purchased as chassis. Excuse me. Yeah, the vehicles are purchased as a chassis, and then you, if it's, um, pickup, then it comes with a box. But most of these are a chassis only, and then you attach the, uh, flatbed or the dump box to it. And that's included on the three hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, so where, on the flatbed one, is that just coming as a chassis then, and won't have a box on it?
The flatbed's separate, correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't have a bed we needed to do something with now, and, uh, we had paid for a bed, and now we pay separate for a, a flat.
No.
Flatbed as well.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't come with the box.
Right. It doesn't come with a separate box that we have to sell. In the past, we have retrofitted other vehicles.
Right.
And then auctioned the boxes separately off on our auction, so.
Yeah. And, uh, the, what's the name of the organization here? The Powers Alliance Contract and Equipment Technology. They have some, they have set, uh, specs, standards for each of these vehicles with different options and stuff ready, selected. Right? How can we work with that group to change some of those options if we don't need the fancy aluminum wheels with the shiny hubs and, and those other kinds of things for our work vehicles?
Um, that is a, uh, a group that is far above us here.
Yeah.
Um, that's over the whole nationwide. That's kind of a standard that they go by. They have a, a group that will, uh.
Ford's making a good deal.
They make a decision on what is the common, um, options that most companies would use. Um, like the XLT option is generally the lowest option that is offered to us, and if we try to change that, sometimes that costs us more.
Yeah.
To vary away from the option than is to stay with it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, and thank you for answering all the questions. Appreciate it. Item thirteen, administration report, including first quarter strategic plan report. Comments must be limited to items on the current report. Are there any questions? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. I appreciate Larry Burks putting the first quarter's report on the strategic plan together in the administrator's report. Uh, it, for the public who wants to know what we as a council, administration, the mayor, administrator, have set as our priorities for the year. It's all in the strategic plan. Uh, we have met some of those targets just tonight, and this first quarterly report outlines what we're doing in terms of progress for the year. So I thank Joe Mangiomele, the administrator, and Larry Burks, the assistant administrator, for keeping the public informed and for having it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions or discussion or comments? See none, thank you. We'll move on to item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number Thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statements made during city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city official, and employees, or members of the general public, shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, city official employee, or member of the general public and City Code Section two dash six eight regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted on the outside of the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes, please. Is there anyone?
Good evening. My name is Dwight Beaton. I live at forty-three oh nine Amos Gates Drive over in Quail Creek in Bellevue. And, um, I come before you tonight to bring up, um, not only two weeks ago, but also this evening. Um, and I guess a decision that was made as far as paying for one of the council people's internet, and then, um, it was voted on tonight to pay for it. Um, we had discussions, um, a number of people, probably in the civic organizations I belong to, probably between forty-five and fifty people. Um, most of those forty-five to fifty people bordered on either they thought it was ludicrous to, they were at least somewhat concerned about it. Um, so I did a little bit more checking, and I checked with a couple of employers, and one of them being a large insurance company in Omaha. And, um, they have work-at-home employees that work forty hours a week doing claims review and those type of things, and their policy is they pay between fifty and seventy-five percent of that person's internet. Um, it is not a case because they, they know full well that that internet is not being used exclusively for that business. I talked to another business that has some work-at-home employees, and they were somewhere in that same range, about sixty-five to seventy percent. So unfortunately, a precedent's been set, um, and I think tonight that it went the other way. The other thing that people had a problem with, and I guess I had two, was it went three-three vote. It should have never been able to go with three-three vote. When a person, there's no organization in the world where you get to ask for your bills to be paid and then have an input into it. The gentleman who asked for his bill to be paid should have abstained, and the five peers on the council should have voted their conscience and their constituents' views. Um, in my opinion. I may be wrong, but I, I don't believe I am. It would be like a, um, person in the, in the city government asking for a budget and then having a vote in that budget, whether or not that got approved or not. It, like Mr. Roberts wants to put in a massive capital improvement plan. He presents it, and does he get a say in it? No, he gets to present his plan, but when it comes time to vote, he's not one of the voters. So to leave you on a, a little fun fact, I, I know some members of this council have said that they are champions for sidewalks. I did a little bit more survey. I have, um, some internet that we get in our house. It comes into the house, we pay for it each month. And, but believe it or not, calling around to some companies, we called some concrete companies, and for ninety-five dollars, you can purchase one cubic yard of cement. To put this into perspective, one cubic yard of cement at the old city requirement of four-foot wide sidewalks at four inches thick will pave between twenty to twenty-one linear feet of sidewalk. You're the engineer, sir. Is that somewhat correct? The, the new requirement at five feet wide in the new subdivisions, like we heard Bell Largo, which is, sounds like a great place that's going in tonight, by increasing it to five-foot wide at four inches thick, you're putting down sixteen linear foot of cement. City crews, uh, from what I understand, are paid their hourly wage. We could have city crews out putting in sidewalks, and for that ninety-five dollars that we're spending each month on not only one person's internet, but now two peoples, and I guess my question would be, when are the other four of you gonna come and ask? Because obviously a precedent's been set, and nobody's gonna say, well, he can't have it, but you can. You know, we could be putting in a lot of sidewalks, and that's just, that's just. You know, we could be putting in a lot of sidewalks, and that's just sidewalks. I mean, we're talking about, we, a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion on whether or not we were going to limit a volunteer dinner to eight thousand or five thousand or. I hate to tell you this, but at ninety-five bucks a month for twelve months, you're over a thousand dollars a year already for each one of the individuals that's getting their internet paid. That's two thousand dollars that could be going into someone. Sounds like a spit in the wind, but it adds up. It really does. And if you look at the amount of years that that person may possibly be on the council. I mean, I'm hoping somebody will run and at least put that ax to the grindstone and say, hey, I've got my own internet. You won't have to pay my bill. I'm hoping that happens for the next group that runs, because I'm proud as can be of my Ward Three person, and I'm really proud of Councilman Maudry, and I know I'm not supposed to call out names, but for bringing up the true fiscal conservatism that they have this evening and that they continually do. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Are there others? See none. We'll move on to number fifteen, closed session, none. Number sixteen, adjournment. Mr. Cook.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, and good night.